All right, I have 6:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the roll call. Carrie? Come back, Joe?
Joe Coletti Hebron.
Thank you. Gabe?
Gabe Mark Seaborn.
Great. Eric?
Eric Chenko Andover.
Great, thank you. Kirsten?
Kirsten Earlson.
Mike?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Dr. Benson Clark? Okay, Mary? Can they hear us?
I think she was on G.
Okay. Sue? Sue, I can see you. We just called you for roll call. I'm gonna count you as here because I can see you. Heather?
Heather Summer Hebron.
Great, thanks. And Mike Morris Hebron. Can you just let me know if Dr. Benson Clark or Mary come on, please, as well as Carrie? Thanks. All right, start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, move on to item three, public comments.
Mary just joined.
Oh, Mary just joined. Great, thank you. All right. Hebron Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. And if I could impose on you, Gabe, if you would hold the title of timekeeper today, I would appreciate it. That being said, is there anyone present that is here for public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and move to the hybrid web portion. Is there any online that wishes to present public comment? Any hands, Eric? Okay, I'm gonna assume there are none. Move on to item Agenda Four. Are there any proposed added or deleted agenda items?
Carrie joined.
Oh, great, thank you, Carrie. Again, item four, any motions to add or delete agenda items? All right, we're gonna move on to item five, the Student Representative Report. And we are fortunate to have our veteran Rowan Ackerman here tonight. And then our newest addition, Ava, please go ahead and, actually, go ahead and take the floor. You can introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Ava. I am in my junior year of high school. I am part of the math team, the yearbook club. I'm part of the math team. I'm really excited to be here. I'm really excited to see how this whole process goes. And, yeah.
Great, thank you. Glad to have you. Rowan?
All right, so, well, obviously, you already know who I am. I don't know if I need to introduce myself. But, yeah, I'm glad to be back, obviously. Thank you for having me back. For my report this week, I just wanted to touch on some of the fun activities that are coming up. So, we will be doing a Spirit Week from Monday, October 31st to Friday, November 4th. We're doing a Costume Day, we're doing Decades Day, USA Day, and then Country versus Country Club Day, and then Class Colors Day. And that'll be on the day of actually our long overdue pep rally that we have not had since, obviously, pre-COVID. And I haven't had one since the fall of my freshman year. So, obviously, that's gonna be very cool to see that back. And, yeah, that's gonna be like games and stuff and introductions to fall sports teams and stuff like that. So, yeah, those are some things we're looking forward to. So, that's it.
Great, thank you, Rowan. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, that moves us on to item six, the Board of Education Chair Report. So, first on the agenda is to, again, to welcome Ava as our newest student representative and to welcome back Rowan as our veteran student representative for his senior year. The, one thing I'll just tell Ava, and Rowan already knows this, but you are both value adds here. You're here for a reason, you have a voice, and you have connections to the student body and to the school and to the community here that are a different perspective than what we see from the adults and from the faculty and the staff and the administration and the board. So, we highly encourage you guys to participate, speak up. Don't feel like there's anything that we can't discuss, we can. I think one of the best parts about our previous two, including Rowan, was that they were very, I don't wanna say aggressive, but they were proactive about participating and give us a very different perspective that was very helpful in managing what we have to manage. So, welcome and very glad to have you. And Rowan, I didn't think I could like you anymore until I saw you wearing a New York Yankees shirt. And so, you proved me wrong.
They win tonight.
And so do I.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. So, I wanted to also say congratulations to Coach Gerenzey, the Ram volleyball coach. Got a chance to kind of go through his, kind of, story on him. And they're, what, 11-2 now in the season? And historically, pretty kickbutt team for us. And I'm really glad to see that things are going well for him in that season. One other thing, the College and Career Fair, I understand, was held earlier this month. I know that, I wanna say thank you to Jackie Weatherall and everybody that helped her put that together and the organization of that. I know we have some folks that are gonna do some presentations tonight, and I'm looking forward to hearing about that. But I really appreciate you putting all that time and energy and effort into organizing that. I think it's extremely important and be super surprised about what kids find new areas to be interested in the future just from those kind of events. So, thank you so much for doing that. And then the last thing I would just throw out there is that I know we also hosted some representatives from colleges, universities, tech schools, the military branch, some regional companies. I think Electric Boat was one of them. For the first in-person college career fair since the onset of the pandemic. And the students had an opportunity to kind of meet and speak with those representatives. And, again, everybody that put the time and energy and effort into organizing that and supporting that, again, appreciate that, too. Those are really important events, especially for our older students. That being said, I will go ahead and pass it on to item seven, the Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you very much. I would like to welcome Ava as well as the student representative. I look forward to working with you and hearing your perspective on issues that we discuss with the board. I also would like to echo your sentiments congratulating Tim Gerenzey, Coach Tim Gerenzey, on his 400th career win as the head coach of Ram volleyball. I could tell you that as the parent of a neighboring school district that had to watch my daughter's team play three years against Tim's Ram players, it is a lot better to be cheering for Ram as opposed to cheering for other teams. They're playing right now, and hopefully, they'll chalk up another victory. Just echoing your sentiments again, I would also like to just thank Jackie for the work that she put into organizing the College Career Fair. Yeah, she took me on the podium. Thanks, Jackie. It was great, just really good to see the energy of everybody together. You know, as my kids were kind of victims of the pandemic, didn't have that opportunity to do that. It was just really good to see that for the students of Ram. So, yeah, thank you, Jackie, for that effort. I'd also like to share, I did share this with the board, but I think it's important to note that for the 11th year of a 14-year partnership, it was interrupted by the pandemic. Ram Student Staff and Families hosted 15 students from Spain as a part of our cultural exchange partnership with, I try to get this right, Instituto de Luis de Gengora. This partnership, as I said, has been in place for 14 years and provides an opportunity for Ram students and families to host students from Spain during a visit to the U.S. As well as an opportunity for Ram students to travel to Spain, which they will be doing in April. Super excited about that possibility, or the opportunity for our students. And it's just a, it's a great reciprocal relationship. Another program that actually took place, I believe, on the same day as the College and Career Fair was the financial aid presentation that was held that night for parents and students to learn about navigating the complications of the, now I've gotten into college, what do I do next, right? Because that, and that is a complicated endeavor. And our guidance staff hosted a financial, somebody from the financial aid office at UConn. She did a presentation about FAFSA, which is the Free Application Federal Student Aid, merit scholarships, and other important aspects of financing post-secondary education. It's, we actually have a policy coming up that we're gonna discuss tonight that talks about the responsibility to try to get more and more students to increase our percentage of FAFSA completion. And we'll talk more about that, but this is an effort that we make towards that end. I did want to update the board on how plans are shaping up to have Eric Protoulis, EastCon's Executive Director, attend an upcoming meeting. This was discussed at our last meeting. We had initially discussed having that be for this month. Unfortunately, Eric was not available to be here for this month. I've locked him in, and he anticipates being available or coming to a presentation about EastCons and the services that the rest provides to us at the November meeting. I also just wanted to inform the board members about a change in the report that they received in this month's agenda regarding the suspension of students for the month of September. It's Enclosure 15.2. In previous years, a higher degree of detail had been shared with the board about students who had been suspended. However, we were advised by our board attorney that disciplinary information should only be shared in the aggregate. So, really high-level summary as opposed to providing a degree of detail to ensure that we are protecting the confidentiality of students. It's important that we maintain FERPA, Family Educational Rights to Privacy Act. And we were dancing with not doing that by getting some details out there about, we were providing information about the number of days, the date of the suspension, and that's just really too much detail. So, again, we were advised to not share that and only share it in the aggregate. So, the report that you are receiving this month and will receive moving forward will only contain the number of suspensions from the previous month. And this concludes my report.
Great, okay, thanks. Is there a question on that? I thought I heard a ping over there.
Dr. Benson Clark joined in.
Okay, got it. Okay. As item eight, there's the Consent Agenda, there's actually three separate elements in it. And so, what I would like to do is to make the motion to, the motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, ask for the second, and then open it up for discussion on each of the three different items before we actually move into a vote. So, we'll do each of the three items somewhat separately, but make sure that we have an opportunity if anybody has any questions or wants to discuss or debate them. So, don't want anybody to think that we're rushing past any of the discussion on that. I just wanna go ahead and get the motion open, and then we can have the discussion. And then if, for some reason, you know, there's a reason why anybody wants to parcel out a piece of it, then we can hold separate motions if necessary. So, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So, moved.
Okay, Mike?
Second.
Gabe, thank you for the second. All right. So, having a motion on the floor, I'll go ahead and open up discussion on 8.1, Approval of the Minutes from September 19th, 2022. Is there any questions?
Yeah, sorry, Mike. I do.
Go ahead, Mary.
There's a couple name misspellings. I don't know if that's important or not in the September 19th minutes. We have, for, like, for instance, I think Colin's name is even not spelled correctly. But 8.2 says Julie Day, but then it says July Day for her name.
Okay.
And we've got Kirsten and Kirsten, both different spellings in the document as well. I didn't know if that was significant or not, but I thought I just.
We might as well get it right, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it. So, let me ask you a question. Should we then just try to do an amendment to the minutes for the next meeting? Is that the appropriate method for resolving that?
I think that we should, yes.
Okay. All right, so if it's okay with everybody, then what we'll do is provide, develop an amended minutes for the next meeting and then put that up for the Consent Agenda for the following meeting, unless anybody has any concerns about that.
Mike, I think we can, Mike, I know we can approve it just pending those clerical or spelling corrections, if you wanted. I'm positive about that.
Okay, that's fine, then that's what we'll go ahead and do. Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions about the approval of the minutes, thank you, Mary, appreciate the input on that. 8.2, the amendment for the minutes for August 22nd. Can you just touch on what was the amendment?
This was, somebody, somebody was omitted from it. I believe it was, I believe it was Carrie was noted as not initially being present.
All right.
And she, in fact, was present, so we wanted to make sure that the minutes accurately reflected the people in attendance.
Okay, got it, great. Is there any debate or discussion about the 8.2 amendment of the minutes from August 22nd, 2022 meeting? Okay, hearing none, I'll also put up 8.3, Approval of the Superintendent's Attendance at National Conference Enclosure 8.3. Any discussion?
So, I want to discuss that. I support it fully, wholeheartedly. And I want that to be noted, that I very much support it, but I do want to discuss that. So, at your pleasure, we can proceed however makes sense.
Please go ahead, Dr. Benson Clark, you have the floor.
Oh, sure. Well, first off, I'm happy that our superintendent is participating in professional development. And I don't think there's much that's as important as that, how we treat our staff, our people, and professional development. But just, and not at this meeting, but just for the Finance Committee to have a real idea of the cost. And I think the return is greater. I would like to just factor in, and I don't mind doing a rough draft and checking it with Eva, or however it makes sense. But the cost of the travel, staying at the conference, the lodging, the conference itself, just what that cost is. And the only reason that I want to do that, everybody knows that I'm obsessed with getting a strong, great budget through. And I want us all to understand the budget so very well and the importance of professional development that we can talk to our neighbors who text us, people who we barely know, who DM us on Facebook or whatever. And we feel strong and confident in our reasons and rationale. And I think especially, someone alluded to COVID. I don't think it's ever been more important that we develop internal capacity and keep growing and teaching and learning. So, that's just something that I'd like us to do, and I want to just, under full transparency, share that with everybody. And to be clear, I'm not questioning it, doubting it. I just want us to know where our dollars go. I think great education does cost money. And I think, I just think it's for transparency, if that makes sense, Chairman.
Understood.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Well, and I'd like him to come back and teach us something or excite us with his new knowledge, too. And I would think, I would think that he'd be willing to do that. So, maybe we could hear from him if he thinks that would be helpful, too. As a board, I'd love to grow and learn.
It's fair. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's do a voice vote. The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, noting that we'll make a couple of spelling corrections for some names. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that passes unanimously.
Mike, I'm sorry. It's Mary again. I do have to abstain because I was not at the September 19th meeting. So, if the minutes aren't part of that, I would need to abstain.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to abstain? Got it. Okay, move on to item number nine, the Student Program Spotlight and the Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative, item 9.1.
Great. So, I felt it was important for board meetings to include an opportunity for us to showcase some of the great things that are taking place in our schools. To that end, we felt that this month's spotlight, and the first really, first one, at least for the past few years, I believe that this is something that was historically done within previous board meetings. But I think the pandemic, as with many things, shut that thing, shut that down. But with this month being a manufacturing month, we thought it would be appropriate to showcase Ram's Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative. Manufacturing Day, for those of you who don't know it, is recognized in the first Friday of October. And there is an incredible need to get skilled employees in the field of manufacturing. I was just having a conversation with somebody about that. And at this time, I'd like to invite Jackie Weatherall, Department Coordinator for Career and Technical Education, to step up and share more, a little bit more about our program with everybody.
Thank you. Is it okay if I don't use the podium?
Whatever, you're most comfortable.
Thanks. Thank you so much for having me tonight. As Colin said, I am Jackie Weatherall, I'm the Career and Technical Education Coordinator here at Ram. This is not my first time presenting to the board, but there are some new members. So, thank you for serving on the Board of Ed. Your job is a difficult one, and I appreciate the time that you're giving me today. So, I'm here to talk about our Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative, which began in 2018-19. And we were actually the first school in the entire state around the program as a pilot with the Eastern Workforce Investment Board. And as you can see here, we have a little bit of data to look at where we're looking at this pipeline feeding potential jobs, both for the employer as well as for our students. So, again, I'm the coordinator and I'm also the liaison, which means that I work with E-WI, the Eastern Workforce Investment Board, which is the sponsoring organization, and I also work with the industry partners. And I'm kind of the one that's responsible for a lot of those administrative, like, tasks with this program. However, the main person for this program is our brand-new teacher, Austin Carey. He's our manufacturing teacher and someone that we are so glad to have because he brings a renewed energy. He is someone who worked in the industry and has teaching credentials. So, we're very excited to have him. He is actually online, and I just would like him to be able to say hello and introduce himself for a minute, if you don't mind.
Please. So, I'm Austin Carey. I'm the manufacturing teacher, teaching welding manufacturing. Really excited to teach the YMPI program. I taught it at Killingley last year, and then I also worked as a machinist and engineer for a few years. I got my bachelor's from Central in Manufacturing Engineering Tech. And then I went through the ARC program to become certified to teach. So, I'm really excited to be here at Ram, show the students some of the information that I gained from guys in the industry that were in it for 40, 50 years. And I really wanna, really excited about the whole program that we're gonna be able to produce. And hopefully, we can get some kids into the industry to get some jobs.
All right.
Thanks, Austin. So, just to reiterate our partnership that we have, E-WI is actually a phenomenal organization that's right out of Franklin, and they actually fund some of the program for us. So, I know as a Board of Ed, you're interested in finances and how much things cost. We do know that manufacturing is a costly program to run because of the materials. And we know that inflation causes prices to increase. But we have a really great partnership with E-WI where they're willing to invest in our program as well. So, we use that to the best of our ability.
Jackie, this is Judy. The reason, from my perspective, I can speak for myself that we watch dollars so closely is so that we can have money to hopefully pay our staff well and have these kinds of programs for kids. And it broke a lot of our hearts last year that we had to dial back for last year, you know, one of our early childhood, our food kind of programs, whatever we ended up doing. And I can speak for myself. I fully support this and understand this because I was married to someone who, they off-sided work in China and brought it back here. So, I think we are only looking at dollars not to be cheap, but to get the best salaries possible for our staff and the best programs for our staff. At least that's, I speak as an individual, not as a board, but I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you so much. We know that Ram is definitely supportive of this program. It's been very evident over the years since it began that our community really supports this program. So, today is not about dollars necessarily, it's about supporting just the program itself. So, thank you for chiming in on your support of us. To just kind of fast-forward a little bit to industry partners. We have the EMA organization, which is over 50 manufacturing companies in Connecticut that we work closely with to try to align employment for our students that leave Ram and are looking for employment in manufacturing. We also have a strong partnership with Electric Boat, which hires in a variety of trades, such as carpentry, manufacturing, and ship fitting. And then I have a celebrity guest from the community, Charles Daniels here. He is the CFO. He's also a Hebron resident, and he is a strong advocate of our programs here. And he has really been a tremendous benefit to us, both through our manufacturing program and our entrepreneurship program. So, I really want to thank you for coming today to show your support. And just to review our pathway a little bit, Austin has been working, or should I say, Mr. Carey, has been working very hard on updating our introduction to metal curriculum so that we have a clearly defined pathway. Previously, our Manufacturing for Industry class, which is the pipeline that I'm referring to, was offered to any senior. And we found that the success was not there, where we weren't getting a high number of students entering the workforce. So, we're trying to streamline the pathway where we're providing the students with a clear vision of starting at an intro class and working their way through the program instead of just seeing a senior that jumps into the program. And, you know, Nick talked about, he will talk about his experience, that he's here to talk about that. But he is one that kind of worked through a pathway, and I believe Jake was the same. Where I have two students here that are gonna speak to you in just a moment because I know you're happier to hear them talk than me. But this is just a little bit of information to share with the board so that you can have a clear idea of what's going on right now and what the vision is for the future. So, to highlight our Manufacturing for Industry program, it's a double class that runs in the spring semester currently. So, it's a clock in and clock out. We actually run it as if it's a job. There's employability skills that are emphasized there. They attend job fairs. There's high demand, high skill, and high-wage career paths for these kids. And we're really excited to give them those opportunities. They also earn college credit through Three Rivers Community College in the areas of manufacturing math, blueprint reading, and shop safety, which is their OSHA certification. And I believe some of our former grads can talk a little bit about their experience with those classes. I'd like to get to the stars of the show, which would be Jacob Arseneau. He was one of our first graduates that went through the program and has had a tremendous success because of it. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Hi, my name is Jacob Arseneau. I graduated in 2019, but it says that up there. I was part of the first Pipeline Initiative program. And coming into my senior year of high school, I had already taken all the metal classes I could. The metal teacher was kind of sick of seeing me. But when they offered this class, I jumped right on it. I had a bunch of free periods. And I didn't really know what I was gonna do after high school. I was thinking about taking a gap year because I didn't know what I wanted to do with my life. But after going through this program and going to the job fair that they offered, I met Charles and got hired right out of high school. And I have not looked back since. I'm now working as a tool and die major at a company called MultiSeals in Manchester. And I couldn't see another path my life could have taken. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'm gonna introduce Nick De Silva. He's a 2022 graduate, and he is super nervous, but he knows I'm here for him, so.
Hi, guys. So, coming into Ram, I was super excited about taking classes in the wood shop and the metal shop. I always loved working hands-on, and it was just a great opportunity for me. So, freshman and sophomore year, I took classes in the wood shop, and those were great. I learned a lot in there. I always talked about it, everyone should take those classes. It's just such basic skills everyone should have. And then junior year, I wanted to take classes in the metal shop, but unfortunately, COVID hit, and I didn't see much point in taking that class through Zoom. So, senior year, I took welding for a semester. That was amazing. I always wanted to learn how to weld. So, I took that, and through that class, I found out about the Pipeline Program. And that was a great opportunity for me because I had no idea what I wanted to do after high school. Watching all my friends decide what colleges they were going to, I was just stressed out all year, trying to figure out what I wanted to do, maybe go to NCC, maybe take a gap year, or just start working at a random job. I was scared. And then the Pipeline Program came up, and it was just a perfect opportunity. the pipeline program came up and it was just a perfect opportunity. Um, I learned a lot throughout that class. It was insane how much I learned in such a small period of time. And then I passed that class, graduated. I took a test at the end that gave me credits to go to Three Rivers or Q B C C. And now I'm at Q B C C doing a one-year manufacturing program. So now I get out early from the credits I got from the test from the pipeline, uh, from the pipeline program. And yeah, it's great. Like if it weren't for that program, I don't know what I would be doing right now. And I love manufacturing too. It's, I'm beyond grateful for it because I, like I said, I don't know what I would be doing right now. And I have so many options laid out for me. I could further my education within manufacturing next year at Q B C C. Or I could start working and I'm basically set up to get like a really good job right afterwards. So like I said, I'm beyond grateful for the pipeline program. I don't know what I would be doing right now without it.
That's great. Right. Nick, you have no reason to be nervous. That was excellent. Thank you.
Mike, I, I wanna, I wanna ask you, and gentlemen, thank you so much. Um, for, for me, that is, and everybody's done a great job, but that is absolutely the highlight of the meeting. I'd love to hear from kids who are in college or the military or, um, in the, the manufacturing field or whatever, because we want, we want to support you right along. And I agree, don't ever be nervous. We're all pretty much moms and dads and community members and we really care about you guys and education. So, so thank you.
Okay. Is that, did you?
I'm gonna leave it to Nick being the.
Okay. Yeah, you can't talk any better than you can top that.
Phenomenal. Thank you to Jake and Charles for coming as well. It's really great to have supportive people in the community that will come back and talk about their experiences and talk about why things are important. Charles, would you like to be the finale or?
Um, yeah, I mean, I can, uh, speak real quickly. Thank you. Um, uh, my name is Charles Daniels. I'm a resident of Hebron. I have children in the school system and as Jackie mentioned, I work for Webco Plastics and I'm involved in EMA and a number of other manufacturing organizations. And it's great to hear, uh, I remember the day that I met Jacob and everything that he was talking about there. He had such a love and passion and interest for, for building things and for designing and seeing creations. And he was talking to me about, um, riding dirt bikes and being able to make his own parts. I'm so excited about it. And to be able to give him the opportunity to do something that he loved. And it was interesting hearing you talking about, um, financial aid and all of the, the programs you're going through. And Jacob doesn't have any worry about that. He has another zero debt. He's, uh, makes, uh, really good money and he's doing something that, that he loves. And he is in high demand. He can go anywhere. You can too. Well, if you want to interview, set him up. But thank you for supporting this program. Um, I'm happy to come back, um, and talk about any of this, uh, at a later time as well. But it's so important. Our industry is in crisis mode right now. There's just not enough people for the jobs that we need. Um, and I was telling Superintendent Colin earlier that, um, the two hundred kids that you have graduating, um, all of them could get a job the day after they graduate in manufacturing, all from one company. Companies like Pratt and Whitney or Electric Boat would hire the entire, the entire class because we need people that are machinists and operators and designers, things like that. We also need accountants, salespeople, and human resources. So please, um, continue to, to focus on this program, uh, because even those students that aren't going into manufacturing as a career field, um, the skills that they, they have and the opportunity for contextual, experience-based learning is, is, uh, a way for some students that don't learn in a traditional way, for them to gain skills in, in, in math and science and all those really important functions that we need for no matter what we do.
Great.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you and, uh, I appreciate the time given to this program and the, and staff. So.
Thanks all four of you for being here and presenting. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the, um, community member for coming out too. That is, that is so important. And, you know, I, I hope that, and I would request Steve and Jackie that we get you on the agenda soon to hear about, um, so we don't have a repeat of last year with early childhood and, and food. And this, this is amazing. Thank you, everyone.
Any other board members had any other questions or comments? Nope. All right.
Could I just say something?
Yeah, please jump in.
So I just want to just, first of all, Nick, I completely agree. You have nothing to be nervous about. In fact, I think you have a, a future in public speaking or politics. Um, that's my opinion. I'd go public speaking, maybe not politics. Um, I, I also want to say just, Jacob, one of the things that you said is, you know, the skills that you learn have paid dividends down the line. I, I maybe shouldn't admit this considering the position that I'm in. I don't use too much that I learned in algebra or geometry or anything like that, but I could tell you the skills that I learned in shop, that's what they called it when I was in high school many, many years ago. It has enabled me to save hundreds of, probably thousands of dollars because I finished my own eight hundred square foot basement and did everything by myself. And I fixed my own cars to the extent that I'm able. And so it's just, I completely agree with you. It's just skills that you learn in programs like this are, are paid dividends down the line.
Totally agree. All right. Well, thank you all so much for coming. Really appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to item ten, the A H M survey results, uh, ten point one.
So, uh, thank you. As the board knows, uh, RAM is fortunate to have a strong partnership with A H M in providing for students and families in the community. Uh, A H M has, has, uh, biannually, I had to look it up. Biannually is twice a year. Biannally is every other year, uh, gives a survey to students in, at RAM, um, called the Youth Voices Count Survey. Uh, and I'm gonna introduce Tressa Giordano, A H M's executive director, Jen Bowler, A H M's prevention coordinator, and also Bonnie Wieland Smith from B. Wieland Smith Consulting to share data gathered from the survey, uh, that was administered last spring to RAM students. So welcome, Tressa, Bonnie, and Jen.
Thank you. I think, uh, RAM's continued collaboration with A H M. Um, as many of you know, we have the drug-free community grant at A H M. That is a ten-year grant. So as part of our grant, we have Bonnie come out and do this survey with RAM students. Um, we were, you know, fortunate to be able to do this in twenty twenty, right in the midst of COVID. Um, and I was so grateful for the administration at that time to agree to, to administer it. I think we captured some really interesting, uh, data around COVID. And so I think having the survey executed this spring, when we captured a lot of the kids that were still part of that COVID before they graduated, that experience, um, again, really brought out some interesting data. So, um, I want to thank Bonnie for all of her hard work and just digesting all of that data and, and bringing out this abbreviated, uh, presentation tonight. Um, once, once you all digest it and approve it, you know, we will have the full report up on A H M's website. But again, just thank you for your continued collaboration because the information that comes out of this survey helps Jen, our prevention coordinator, and our CHC coalition to plan, um, prevention initiatives throughout the next couple of years. So with that.
Thanks, Tressa. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. I've been here many times over the years, had the pleasure to present to RAM Board of Ed. There's some familiar faces, I think more so online tonight. So some of you are new to me. I'm new to you. Um, I have a consulting business that is to help community organizations and nonprofits and sometimes treatment organizations use data to drive planning to better the health of youth all the way across the lifespan. So with A H M, I have the pleasure of working with the CHC coalition and using this data to guide their planning to support youth mental health. You get abbreviated findings today. I only have fifteen minutes. Someone give me a warning as I'm getting close to the end. Uh, we can, here we go. Uh, the survey happened in May twenty twenty-two, grade seven through twelve, completely anonymous survey that is optional for students to participate. There is no way we can find out what student said what. My own kids in my own town take our survey. I don't know what they said. So I always like to reiterate, it's entirely anonymous. These data are aggregated. Um, moving to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, so our full report does subgroup analysis to help us understand where there might be some differences amongst students, um, where there might be greater or less risk factors. We're not gonna talk about that today. I just like to point it out because it's something unique about our product that allows Tressa and Jen to do really great detailed planning in their efforts. So we had a really nice response rate of eighty-one percent overall for grade seven through twelve. The last time the survey occurred in twenty twenty, it was seventy-five to thirty-three percent, which is a really strong response as well, but this was even better. Next, please. So we're gonna start with gaming assets and consequences. This is gaming, video gaming, like many of our kids do. We have to ask both, assets and consequences. As adults, we're like, ugh, the gaming. But really, youth have perceptions, and many adults, of why gaming is a great thing in their life. And we have to honor that. So you'll see the most strong response here has to do with how gaming provided you feel more connected with others. And that was about equal across the middle and the high school. Uh, students often saw things or preferences in gaming that their parents or guardians might not approve of. The grade is actually the high school and it didn't count on the slide. Something shifted. So I know that's a little more so, um, at the high school. And then sometimes students don't complete their work or study as a result of their gaming or they don't sleep enough. Yeah? We ask a similar question related to social media. And you'll see here what stands out again is students feel connected to others as a result of social media. Um, seeing things that their parents wouldn't be thrilled about also occurs again more so at that high school level. And then I also like to point out, this is a question where you can select all that apply. So students can feel both better about themselves as a result of social media, but also worse about themselves. So those can be the same individuals reporting that. Next, looking at. Oh, no. I'm gonna have to talk you through this because the slides are really pretty, but they didn't translate in the.
They, they are on the, um, slides that.
Oh, you have that. I'm so happy you have that.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Don't know why that translates that happened, but I find sometimes Power White does that. So overall, forty-two point four percent of students in grade seven through twelve have reported that they've never been bullied. That's awesome. We did see a slight increase in thirty-day bullying rates since the last time we surveyed. So I wanted to note that. Knowing the last time we surveyed was twenty twenty, very different environment. We will always have an asterisk next to twenty twenty because students were remote learning. They weren't social. They weren't involved in sports clubs, all of it. Everything was different. There was a slight uptick, but again, that is very well because students weren't engaging with each other day to day, face to face, the same way. We could move on to the next slide. Places students report being bullied. This is not written on the screen, but all the way on the left of the screen. That's always in classrooms are the top two. And then if you look all the way to the right, the second one in is online. I like to make assumptions that students are gonna say online is the number one. They never do. It's usually someplace in the school building and online becomes like third or fourth choice. Next, please.
Bonnie.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? I've asked, um, first off, I, I want to say that the, the surveys and this is information is incredibly important. Carey, Colin, and I went to a leadership Cabe event and we mentioned how helpful the work that you, Tressa, and Jen do is. And I remember the, um, two, two things stand out to me is, and I have a bullying question, but in, after two thousand eight, the downfall of the economy, A H M was so sensitive that something different was happening. They went back and asked kids about, um, the financial health at homes and, and the economy and how that was affecting mental health. And as we're kind of headed toward a recession, I think that's interesting. And then you, you had a data point, and this is years ago now, but it just blew me away because, um, I still have this slide, that an incredibly high percent of students, especially in seventh and eighth grade, felt that, your term was bullied by exclusion. Do, do you still look, look at that? Because I know it's in the hallway and that may be hard with online and everything. But I just remembered that made me think of things I, I just had never thought of before.
Yes. Great memory. That's a very impressive. Um, we do have a question on the survey about how you are bullied, for example, not places, but how. And you don't see that in your quick presentation, but in the full report that is noted. And I can't off the top of my head tell you what it is for this particular survey cycle.
No worries. No worries. That's perfect. And I know that, um, Jen and Tressa just do a beyond phenomenal job. So no worries. Thank you.
They are definitely on it. Looking at past year anxiety, uh, about twenty-five percent of students who were almost always or always feeling anxious or nervous in the past year. And generally, we're seeing like a little bit of an uptick in that around the some of the time indicator for grade seven and eight. But in the almost always category, overall, it's gone down a bit. So that might be balancing itself out. Uh, I also want to know in terms of comparison by district reference group, what you see here and also for bullying are very, almost identical to similar districts that I survey. Um, I don't note that in reports. We will soon have the ability to give you more powerful reports that way based on our sample size and our aggregate data. Next, please. Looking at anxiety level by source, the two tallest that you see there are grades seven and eight and grades nine through twelve, both indicating that academics are the number one source of anxiety. The next you'll see post-high school planning is the next highest one for grades nine through twelve. Schedule is the next highest for grades nine through twelve as well. And then the two almost equal bars, uh, slightly to the left of the right side of the screen, that's peers. So social things. Social media is what you see all the way on the right. It is almost the lowest. Financial security of those financial concerns, I know that has been a theme this evening around finances, referencing concerns about the recession earlier. That's the least of concerns, anxiety source. Moving on to emotional health indicators. So this is a loaded slide. All the way on the left is thoughts of self-harm. Have you ever thought about hurting yourself? And that's twenty-three percent of students. The next one is self-harm. Have you ever harmed yourself on purpose? That's fourteen percent overall. Uh, looking at sad or hopelessness, have you ever felt that sad or hopeless, that you didn't want to do your normal things? That is thirty-five point four percent. And then what I call the depression indicator, being sad or hopeless so much that you don't want to do your normal things, paraphrasing, um, that is in the two weeks in a row. So more of in line with a clinical diagnosis, but it's not a clinical diagnosis. I want to be clear. That's about twenty percent of students for a hundred and eighty-six students total. And then lastly, considered suicide in the past year, that's about ten percent of students overall, and that's represents ninety-two individuals. So those are some, I like to point out, actual number of students because those are things I worry about. I have kids, I don't want to see kids feeling depressed two or more weeks. I don't want certainly kids considering suicide seriously in the past year. Um, self-harm went up a bit overall since our last survey, but the other indicators have gone down. So that's something I want to point out as well. Again, very similar as a comparison dirt. Looking at the next slide, this is comfort seeking help by source. Parents are the first you see. So the percent of students saying no is ten percent. I don't want to go to my parents for help. But the remaining students, um, are saying, yeah, that high bar right there, especially at that middle school level. What happens when they go to high school in every community is they feel more comfortable with their peers, seeking help, less comfortable with their parents. But their parents still break pretty fine. Looking at school staff, we have twenty-one percent of students saying, yes, I would definitely go to school staff, uh, for help. And then having another trusted adult, overall about thirty-seven percent of students say that they have this. I will note that's slightly less than I would expect for this district as another trusted adult. And I know that's something that A H M, they're super connected to that type of asset or playing into a risk factor. Looking at substance use. This is lifetime. Have you ever done this thing? The one that you see, the tallest bar, that's alcohol. Have you ever had alcohol? Uh, the one next to it, to the right, that's four or more drinks in a row. We call that our binge drinking indicator. Both of those are lower than the last time we surveyed in twenty twenty, which is not what I expected because students reported using and accessing substances less frequently during the pandemic. So seeing lower rates now tells me something good is happening here. Um, looking at vape products, we look at nicotine and vape liquids separately, very intentionally because in terms of grant dollars, you can't fund a vaping program with most federal government dollars, but you can fund, um, a nicotine program or a marijuana program or e-flavored liquids, liquids, excuse me. So those are also both lower in terms of lifetime use than they were in twenty twenty. Next is past month use. With family use of substance is alcohol, which is great because that location is addressing, uh, as part of their drug-free community grant. That is followed by marijuana. Past month use is about seven percent for marijuana and about nine percent or eight point five nine percent for alcohol. Vaping, I know it's a big topic in schools. I have children, as I mentioned, it's all my board that talks about it with my folks. So, uh, looking at nicotine products, about five percent have used a vape in the past month. And for e-flavored liquids, that's about four point five percent. Prescription drug misuse, we all plug into because of concerns over the opioid epidemic. Overall, we have less than one percent reporting past month use of prescription drugs not for medical purposes. The next one is past month use of poor substances by grade. What I want to tell you here is that I see that stepwise pattern I'd expect. We usually see with each grade level a slight increase of substance use. Um, this is past thirty days for past month. I see a big jump here between juniors and seniors or eleventh and twelfth grade, particularly looking at alcohol and binge drinking. So that's an area when I would work with Tressa and Jen is to say, okay, what can we look at around the culture transitioning from eleventh grade to twelfth grade, or even walking it back from tenth grade to eleventh grade? So we could get those interventions in place to hopefully reduce and prevent initiation of alcohol use at that level. Moving on to the next slide, this is age of first use. It's labeled, that's awesome. Okay, so we want to see the age of first use to never happen, but if it's gonna happen, be the highest number we can get to. It's not entirely labeled. So, um, I can tell you here that generally, these ages are the same as in the past. Um, I think they've ticked up a little bit around marijuana, which is good. The higher, the later someone uses, the least likely they'll have a problem with it. Um, and just for reference, the RX, for example, that's twelve point five years. So cigarettes would be thirteen, alcohol fourteen. So the average age of initiation for alcohol is fourteen. Looking at perception of risk and harm. What I'm gonna point out here is that marijuana, smoking and vaping, nicotine, perception of harm has gone down since 2020. We want to see all those up. Marijuana is definitely the one, it's obvious, that's the lowest. We want these high. Looking at ease of access, how easy would it be for you to get this thing? Uh, again, ease of access has gone down since 2020 for marijuana, so that's surprising. Um, also for nicotine and tobacco products. Looking at the next slide. Where substances are most required. Uh, just gonna say it's friends and peers. Number one, the proper word, friends and peers. With the exception being it's equal for prescription drugs, that bar all the way on the right, that group. Um, non-medical use of prescription drugs are required from friends or at home without parents' permission. So that's my message to everyone, to lock their meds or dispose of any unwanted prescription medications. And then next, where substances are used most often. Uh, definitely stands out with friends at their own home or their friends' home, at a party or at home alone. And that is particularly most common. We see that with, uh, prescription drugs. Next. This is using substances at school events amongst kids who've ever used any substance. And I'm just gonna tell you it's the same as it was in 2020, which is shocking. I would expect it to go up because there's more school events, right? Uh, but generally, the most commonly used substance at school events, including field trips or sporting events, is prescription drugs. Uh, or I'm sorry, marijuana, followed by vaping and then alcohol. And next, thank you. Driving under the influence. Have you ever driven under the influence, if you're in eleventh or twelfth grade, of alcohol or marijuana? It's the same as it was in 2020. However, past month driving while having had alcohol or marijuana has gone up since 2020. And then next slide. This is an analysis that I'm not gonna go into. We don't have a lot of time, but it's one of the most exciting things for me when I do analysis is to look at, of all students who had ever used any substance in their lifetime, if there was statistical difference between them and all the, and their peers who had not used, between all the indicators in the survey. And we run this analysis for everything. Here you'll see, just for example, any student who had used a substance in their lifetime was more likely to have more anxiety, have home or family life as a source of anxiety, uh, report not having clear family rules around specific substances. The reason I tell you why I'm excited about this is because, why do we care about substance use? Because it impacts every other aspect of their life. I can't say it's causational, but it's correlated. Kids that use more substances or any substances ever are more likely to have a lot of other challenges in their lives. And I think that's where you probably plug in as Board of Ed, being concerned about that. Okay, next. Um, these are just percent change over time. Uh, we're looking at the comparison all the way on the right between the last survey in 2020 and the current survey. And we see the most significant reduction in terms of percent change was cigarettes, although it was low to start with, which is great. Uh, and then we did see e-cigarette use or vape products go up, uh, quite a bit since 2022. And marijuana went up as well, from seven point five percent to nine point one percent. Uh, so we're seeing some good things and some things are, you know, definitely what Agen and the Czech coalition can work to address. And then we're almost done. These are all the other substances that we don't take statistically use in. So what I want to point out here is that we asked about heroin and fentanyl. Excuse me, fentanyl, have you ever used it? I'm telling you because all communities think about this in terms of the opioid epidemic. And overall, it's less than one percent, which represents five students that had ever used fentanyl or heroin in their lives at that time of the survey. Lastly, toxic stress is a new indicator. It sort of reflects, I think it was Judy that mentioned, um, concerns about finances and things like that. So all the way on the left is about discrimination. Have you, or I'm sorry, violence. Have you ever directly seen, heard, or been a victim of violence in your neighborhood or community? Uh, we have twenty-three percent of high school students reporting yes, and about twenty-three percent of middle school students, very similar to what I see in similar districts. Uh, have you ever experienced discrimination? And this means made to feel inferior or excluded because of race, ethnicity, for example, religion, or learning difference, et cetera. That's about twenty-five percent of students as well in both middle school and high school. Problems with housing is about five point three percent of students at both grade levels and about six and a half percent, uh, had trouble or concerns about food security in their home. And then very lastly, about forty-three percent of students would like to see the data. And in my role, I think it's really important that whoever you ask the data of, have an opportunity to see the data because they have been so generous in providing their de-identified information to support data-driven planning. Thank you for your time. If anyone has questions, if there's time for it, I have to answer.
I, I do have a question. Um, it, it's, it's a question that won't be answered tonight. Um, but I like how you said that you couldn't necessarily say something was, um, causation. Um, I'm wondering, and I'm hoping that some of the things that we've done, such as having food available, and we recommended it for the whole community alleviated, um, alleviated needs for, for food or hunger. And I, I don't know if our guidance counselors, I, I know that would just be more side information or anecdotal, but I just would hate, because I think we just, and Eva or someone could say, I think maybe we just started charging for food again or changed.
Not yet.
Not yet. So, so I, I don't know how that could be figured out in a, um, um, private, appropriate way, but I, I just would hate any kid to ever feel embarrassed or hungry or anything like that. So I don't know, you know, not to share at this meeting, but Jen and Tressa, if you know any of that somehow, or if our guidance does, or if Colin has an idea. I just want to make sure that our kids are safe in all ways.
Maybe relevant to tie in Hebron's Food Bank too. I mean, it's not just for Hebron, but I'm sure the other towns have something similar. But there's a pretty exceptional food bank run here in town. So making sure that we, we communicate those, those, those facilities.
I think, Jen, Jen, if I could, I would just say, you know, generally speaking, if, if, if a, if a student or family is ever uh, suspected of having any type of food insecurities, what we would do is, is our staff would communicate directly with AHM, put them in touch, put the, put, you know, put the family in touch with, with, with Tressa and her staff so that they could, they could get the help that they needed. We do have a food bank here, limited, here, here at the high school.
I can, I can reach out because I think what I'm saying, and not to take the meeting, but, um, Vinny made a huge, huge effort to get everybody to try to participate. So it wouldn't be if they were struggling. It was like everybody could to get the, the stigma off of that. And that was at a time when we got some, some reimbursement and things. So I know that we like technically have the kind of, kind of protocol, but I want to see us have a safety net, safety net. And, and I mean, that might be more through conversations that, you know, Tressa or those guys have had or our counselors, Jen Ma, or, or other people. So, and I appreciate that. I know that there are things in place, but I just, I mean, my goal is for us to be the absolute best, most supportive school possible. And I speak as an individual, but anyway, I, I, it's just something that I wonder if that helped. And I, we can't answer that, I know that.
Yeah, I, I will also add that, uh, we do have the Hunger Action Team that is part of the community. I cheer that, we meet once a month. It's school administrators, obviously AHM, faith-based communities, the directors of all the food banks in the surrounding towns. And so this has been a topic that we have been really watching over the span of COVID. And obviously, having the supports by the school and the meal program through COVID has definitely helped. So it'll be interesting, uh, within the state as those reimbursements kind of run out, where we see the families fall, especially when coming to our food banks. And the support that our Hunger Action Team members might, might need more of. So I can definitely keep you guys posted. Uh, if there's any Board of Ed members that would like to join all those, um, Hunger Action Team meetings, we're, we're them up.
I would, I would love to join that because I think wellness, um, in all domains is, is everything. I, I really would love to join that safety and always physical, emotional learning. And it, you know, and when, when is our timeline when we start charging again, Eva?
Uh, so it's predicted that we're going to start charging as of January first.
Okay. And just, and I just shared that because I read that people are worried about grocery costs and, um, heating oil and things. And, you know, I'm not smart enough to, to know if that will be impactful, but I'd like us to maybe consider that in some way be, before January first, if, if that's possible. That, that's all, and I never would want to embarrass any family. And I, I can tell you something, Vinny actually had me reach out to some families. I, I will go to my grave with who they are. You would never have guessed who they were, but that he knew. And that's why he really wanted the food and the pay-for-play and things like that. And, and they're just, um, we live in New England, everybody. There's some people who are just very proud, and you're not going to see them showing up at the food banks, so. But if you want to send me that information, if I, if the times worked with my schedule, I'd love to participate.
Great. Anything, is there anything else?
Not for me.
Any other Board members, questions or comments? That was fantastic. Thank you very much. That was super informative, really appreciate it.
Thank you all so much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll move on to item eleven, old business, there is none. Moving on to item twelve, new business. Item twelve point one, the HVAC grant.
So in your, uh, board packets that you received, um, there was a, an overview of the HVAC grant program. Um, the HVAC grant program is, is new. Um, it is something that, um, we wanted to share a, a higher degree of detail to just a, a one-page summary. And so, um, we thought we would just kind of talk a little bit about it. Um, and, and from the perspective of, of Eva, myself, Mike Schlethorpe, where we think um, it would be best for us to channel our energies, um, with regards to, um, the, the HVAC grant. This is something that we discussed a little bit in the facility subcommittee, so I certainly don't want to trump, trump you, Mike. Um, but it was really something that I just think we wanted to share with you all. Uh, so the state has created a grant to address indoor air quality concerns in schools. Um, it's, uh, a hundred and fifty million dollars of reimbursable funds are to be awarded to public schools statewide. Um, for project, it, it's a fifty percent matching grant. That's important to note, which basically means if we apply to have, uh, to, to, to receive the grant funding, um, whether we're going after a reimbursement of money that we've already expended or whether it was we were going after money that we have not yet expended, um, but are looking to do a new project, uh, they would, the, if we are awarded the grant, it would be for only fifty percent. Um, there, uh, there are some, some limitations that I think are important to, to, to talk about and, and as far as, um, projects that would not be eligible. And I think I wanted to start there just to, to make sure I can temper everybody's expectations. Um, because we do have some, some air quality things. We, we, we are, we are almost twenty years old as a facility. Um, not quite twenty years old yet, but we are almost twenty years old. Uh, and we are, we are nearing the end of, uh, the, the anticipated or projected shelf life of things like boilers, things like chillers, um, things like primary boiler pumps, expansion tanks, things that, um, unfortunately, I did not learn about in shop class in high school, that it's, it's beyond, uh, me. But I, I have had a lot of conversations with Michael and Ava, and these are things that are a part of our capital plan. Um, and they're, they're, uh, anticipated costs that we're already starting to plan for and think about. Um, but again, because of the age of the facility, which is, which we're at nineteen years, um, the project closed out, I think, officially in. The project closed out in oh five, but again, the, the, the facility opened up. Uh, with, with the limit of it being twenty years or older, we wouldn't anticipate being eligible for some of those costs because of, or, or for some of those projects, uh, because of the fact that we haven't reached that shelf life of twenty years yet for the current, uh, for the current things that we have. However, we do have some things that we feel would be wise and prudent for us to consider going after, uh, with regards to reimbursement. Um, some of those projects would be the Media Center Weight Room Project, which was done in the nineteen-twenty school year. Uh, and you know what? I should say this, there's a limited window of time of eligibility for reimbursement. I think it was March of twenty twenty to July of twenty twenty-two. The projects would have had to have been within the scope of, of, of March of twenty twenty to July of twenty twenty-two in order to be eligible for the reimbursement. And, and we have a couple that fall within that. So it's the Media Center Weight Room Project, which was done in the nineteen, which was done during the nineteen, or the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, school year. The total cost of those projects was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, it, I will tell you that we'd have to make sure that the project falls within the March twenty twenty timeframe and theoretically not the February twenty twenty timeframe, but I think, in, in my opinion, it's worth going after and, and, and seeking the reimbursement, the fifty percent reimbursement and, and rolling the dice. We've asked for clarity, they haven't provided it. I think the idea is that we would go for, go for it. Um, and then the other project is the locker rooms and head-to-end room. I had to ask what the head-to-end room is. It's the server room. It's the, it's the room in the building where our servers are, are located, which obviously can emit a tremendous amount of heat. And then there's a, a room off of the auditorium which holds our dimmer racks. Also, these pieces of technology generate a high amount of heat. And those spaces were air-conditioned, uh, just this past school year during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, and the budgeted cost of that was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Both of those projects were funded out of capital, I believe. And, um, that process, that project is, is in the process of being closed out. So it was, I, I can't give a definitive amount as how much it, it is. We budgeted two seventy-five. We anticipate it might come in a little bit under budget, but I don't want to say that for certain. But again, those are projects that we can go after for reimbursement.
Great.
Um, so again, I think what we would be looking for from the board is just some traction. Um, in, 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 you know, we could go through the process then of, um, of, of working towards reimbursement on those projects.
Open it up to the board, any comments, feedback?
Just, oh, just wanted to be clear. So, uh, when the idea was originally introduced and discussed, it seemed like the boilers Just, oh, just wanted to be clear. So when the idea was originally introduced and discussed, it seemed like the boilers were a potential opportunity. But because of the age limitation, they fall outside of the window. Okay.
Correct. The, the other thing too is the boiler project, we'd have, I should say this, just to make sure that everybody understands. There's a significant amount of work that would need to be done in order to even qualify for a new project. You have to have specs. You have to have inspections done of the, you have, there's, there's a whole host. There's a, a significant checklist of things that need to be done. Short of having a project pretty much teed up and ready to go, it would be extremely challenging to get those things done. I will tell you this. My colleagues in other districts who have facilities who would qualify because they meet the 20-year and beyond threshold, they basically, a lot of them have said to me, yeah, we don't know if we even have the time to do this. If that makes sense. So, so, you know, the 19 years versus 20 years, I think just makes the decision-making process a little bit easier for us. But again, the, the work that was done on those other two projects, that's a great opportunity for us. And then the, the second thing too, that I think could, could present a challenge with regards to, even if we had a, a project at 20 or beyond, is the fact that we would have to be able to go into the application process saying, we have the 50% to, to match, right? So if the boiler project is a million-dollar project, we'd have to say, yes, we are committed and ready for a $500,000. Like, and that money would have to come from this fiscal, this fiscal year. And, and so I, we don't, we, short of having a referendum, we don't have that funding.
Yes. So because the other two projects have already, they're already expenditures, we automatically have contributed 100% to those projects. They therefore qualify for 50%.
Correct.
There's only upside as far as those.
That's, that's the way we look at it.
Okay.
I guess that was my point. There's only upside on this. We've already done all the work and paid the money. We might as well take an opportunity to try and just some of it back, right?
Absolutely.
Any other feedback?
And there was, there was nothing in the, the middle school, which is an older facility.
So all our, so the function of our, for lack of a better word, balance of the school are housed in the high school. Sorry. But it's, so it's all in those buildings, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Is that the feedback you needed?
Yeah, we'll, we'll move forward with applying for that.
Okay, great. Okay. Policies, first readings.
All right. I'll, I'll just give a, a high-level summary. These are, these policies were included in your board packet as well. There, there's three that are up for a first read. I can take them one at a time and see if there's questions at them that way. The first one is, is currently, I think, called the Sexual Harassment Students Policy. There's divisions. We'd really want to change it and update it. The new title would be called Title IX, Sexual Discrimination and Harassment. It would be, it would be a longer, lengthier title. It's on, again, it's in your board packet. I will just tell you that this is a, it's a, it's a priority for us to get this policy updated because there were actually legislative changes that I believe were made two years ago. And, and really this policies, the policy language that, that is in front of you should have been adopted quite some time ago to make sure that we are in compliance with, with current legislation. So I, I certainly can entertain any questions if the board has any, has.
Anybody on the board questions on this policy?
I'll just mention that we went over this in some detail at the policy subcommittee. And we got good satisfaction. And, and I don't mean to speak very broadly.
Okay.
And, 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 and the one thing that we thought we'd come back to with all three of these policies, which have significant changes, is that in a year's time, I'll come back and just take a little look and make sure everything still lines up.
Okay. My, my only question was, I'm assuming that the board council lines up with whatever we've.
Yeah, I should have said that. So, so the, the, the language that I propose, that we are proposing, it comes directly from Shipman and Goodwin, their, their recommended policy.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mike.
Okay. So if you want to go over there. Yes.
I have one comment. Is, since this is so outdated, can I make a motion just to approve it altogether instead of waiting for second read?
I have to go back and look at our board policy on approving policy.
You want me to while that?
Why don't we, why don't we do this? It's a great question, Sue. Why don't you give me a second, just look this up to make sure I'm not crossing one policy for another? And then while we're going over the second policy in the read here, I'll, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
I got them right here in front of me, so I'll look it up right now.
So I'll just move on to the second one, which is improving the completion rates of FAFSA. I alluded to this earlier, that this is actually coming from legislation where this is a new policy that needs to be adopted by the board. I should have noted, the board adopts policies I've included within the context of the Board of Education packet, the regulations that are associated with each policy. What the board is actually approving is just the policy. The boards of ed don't approve regulations. Just important for, for me to note that. But, but again, this is language that has been provided by Shipman and Goodwin Model Policy. I have reviewed it with the guidance council and staff and high school administration to make sure that they have a clear understanding of the policy. As Eric alluded to earlier, this was discussed with our policy subcommittee the other day as well. I'll keep rolling.
Yeah, please go.
And, and then the, the third and final one is, is a combination of existing, an existing policy that, that we are going to, to merge with a new, newly required language per updated legislation, which is the new, we've, we've had a policy in our policy book in the 6,000 series, which is 6155, that talks about how education programming, how instruction is provided to gifted and talented students, students identified as gifted and talented. Let, let me just take a step back and explain to you how this process works. Boards of education, school districts are required by law, if, if a family makes a, a referral for special education, for their child to be evaluated to be gifted and talented, we are required per law, just as we are for special educate, any other special education, to go through the identification process. However, once a student, if, if a student is identified as being gifted and talented, there is no obligation for a school district to provide any services for a student once they've been identified. So there, the existing language around our gifted and talented instruction, which is again, currently 6155, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, it, it's, it's, it's in here, but it's, it talks about things that, for lack of a better term, just, just don't happen. It talks about, well, if there's funding, that we may do this, or if there's funding, we may do that. Those things just haven't been done. I'm not saying that pro, programs and services that are, that are, that are appropriate for students, that are appropriately challenging for students aren't offered. It's just that they are not standalone programs for students if they've been identified as gifted and talented. And so what I, what my recommendation is, is we take the new language, which is really about the identification of, of, of gifted and talented students. And we merge that with our current 6155. And the language of the, what I would recommend simply says, the provision of services for gifted and talented students by the board is discretionary, which it is. And I just, I just indicated that. Middle and high school students identified as gifted and talented shall be provided educational programs at an appropriate level within the scope of the district's program of studies. So I'm, what I'm doing is I'm taking new requirements, merging them with what we are currently doing. We, we do a lot for students. I will tell you that for students that are gifted and talented, we have a lot of opportunities for them. We have leveled classes. We have students at the middle school who are, who are able to take high school level classes for high school credit. I, I, I've seen students from the middle school coming up and going into high school classrooms. We obviously have classes like honors, AP, E C E, tremendous opportunities for students.
And is that, is that first read?
Yes.
Okay.
So anyways, I can certainly take questions from board members about that specific policy if you have it.
Yeah. Let me just, so let me just chime in real quickly to answer Sue's question. So policy 9311, which is the formulation, adoption, amendment, and deletion of policies. Item, item six, basically specifically spells out that except for emergency situations, policies will adopted, be adopted, amended, or deleted after consideration at two regular meetings of the Board of Education. The agenda shall be marked to indicate such policy numbers. So while I, I don't, I'm not sure that this constitutes an emergency. I think the only other thing I would say is that while I think I'm, I'm pretty confident individually, and it sounds like maybe a few others are, I think we also just need to keep in mind that we need to give the public at large the opportunity to, who participate and look at the information, the opportunity to digest it and, and if for some reason feel like they want to present public comment at the subsequent meeting, I need to cut, cut them out of that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And someone said it might have been Colin. I can't remember who. But that we always have to go with, you know, the, the higher standard of whether it's law or whatever. So, you know, it would be noted that we had this discussion that we know that we'll be in compliance with the law. And I, I think probably staying with our two read readings is probably good, first wise.
Agreed. Okay. That being solved, let's just move on to the questions about the specific policies. Any board members have any specific issues? Go ahead.
I have a question going back to the sexual harassment one. I didn't see anything in there about consequences or discipline, understanding that, you know, every case is an individual case. But when I was trying to, you know, understand that better, I went back just to see, you know, how discipline is kind of defined with, for the students in the handbook. And it, it felt a little weird to me that each school has their own kind of standard. And is there a reason that that, there wouldn't be one for the district?
The board policy on discipline?
Well, just, you know, when, when you think about a kid who's, who may get in trouble for this, if, you know, the parent's going to look at it, you know, what are the consequences? There's nothing that's defined, which I understand individual situations are, may, may require different, different outcomes. But even, you know, when I went back and just looked at consequences, discipline in general, it's, each school has their own sort of, in the student handbook and that type of thing, that's, it felt to me like, you know, I, I wondered, why isn't there just one for the school district? Or is there something different in how we handle the middle school kids versus high school?
I think that the answer is yes, there could be because it would depend on this, it would depend on the fraction that the student is potentially doing. There's a lot of things, as you, as you noted, that are taken into consideration. Certainly the age of the kids would be one of those things. You would look at the disciplinary history of a particular student, which could weigh into it. But I, but I just want to make sure too, though, that you understand, there's a single student discipline policy per the Board of Education. And so when you talk about one for the high school, one for the middle school, if you're alluding to the, to the handbooks, that's, that's the, the policy of the Board of Education related to student discipline is, is what would be utilized with regards to determining.
The consequence.
The consequences, correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's a, that's a, there's not a, it's not a board policy specific for discipline for middle schools and a board policy. I'm assuming what you're referring to, and I'm just going to turn to Mike because he's here, is, is what is identified in the handbooks.
Okay.
And that would be certainly something that I'd want to look at because really if there is a disparity between those two things, I, I, I would concur that that would be concerning. So I'd want to look into that.
Definitely something maybe we want to look at a more uniform way of communicating.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Our, our, our student handbook should have a rel, should be consistent with what our Board of Education policy is because there shouldn't be confusion for families. The, the families, if they look at our student handbooks, it should really line up with what our board event policies would be. So.
So you're going to take that away to take a look?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Heather, is that good? Okay. Any other questions about the policies on the, on the table?
I do.
Go ahead.
So I am reading the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. And I want to make sure that I understood what the superintendent was saying. So in provision of services, where that is, there are crossouts. Are those the crossouts that you suggest Superintendent McNamara?
Well, yes. Yes. I reviewed these policies with our building administration, our, actually our, the entire building administrators in district. And the feedback that I received is that it, it is, it is not 100% reflective of what is currently going on in the schools.
Yeah. And I, I agree with that. I am going to, and I may follow up with you or your principal or someone with some questions on this. You know, I didn't really get a chance to look at the packet until today, and normally I do it beforehand, but I, I do have some questions. Just, just so everybody knows, Ram has a very rich history of, and it started really at the time my, my two daughters were in elementary school. And David Sklar's helped to create a group of math students who were so robust in their math ability and knowledge that they would push out and help create by their numbers, that Ram would have to have an advanced math class, which, which they did do. And it's changed and evolved through time. But I think it's part of what makes Ram exceptional. And I know my daughter was one of, I think four girls started and went from the middle school to the high school for math. And I don't know that they'd ever go back and talk to you as well as those, those boys who did such a nice job tonight. But it was, it was embarrassing and it was really hard being a girl. And two of them actually dropped out. The third one almost dropped out. And I, my daughter wrote that as her college thing about how she wants to help women. And I think that's why she has pretty much a fully paid scholarship, quite honestly, because you could read the pain of being a, a girl with math and what that felt like to be stared at in the high school and things. So, so I do want to look at this more closely. And what I'm trying to say is I, I don't want to just take out things we're not doing without having written that there are opportunities for, right, for, for all sorts of AP classes to be at a head of level in class that kids can get. And, and that's not for class rank, by the way, that can, for certain kids who love learning, that can adversely impact class rank even. But for a child who is really motivated, so who, Colin, would I contact you with my questions going forth with this one?
Yes.
Okay. So I will look at this very closely. It's, it's an area of extreme interest to me. And I, I just want to make sure, I know we won't see that with this board or this administration, but I don't want it ever to be written that if somewhere down the road, we had a whole new board, we all won Lotto and we moved somewhere beautiful and had the grandest of lives and a new board came in and, you know, just wanted to do things by money, not what was best or something. So I, I do want to look at that. I want to, and I think maybe just a couple of words maybe could change and could change the, the meaning. But I will follow up with you on, on that. Is, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you'll share that with the policy committee, right?
Yes, we'll go back to it.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you. Do you have any other input? Any other comments? All right. Thank you for that first read, policy committee. I appreciate that. All right. Let's move on to 12.3 financials. Eva?
All right. So, and 12.3A, you have the packet that reflects the net projected statement, our statement of position. And currently at the end of September 30th, 2022, I'm projecting a proposed net favorable position of $263,511. The state of Connecticut requires school districts to report their enrollment as of October 1st annually. Once that is reported to the state of Connecticut, invoices for Boag, Botec, and Magnus Schools are then generated and submitted to us for payment. So those are in the process of happening. The pupil services department is still closely monitoring their expenditures and ensuring that any changes are captured in either increasing or changing the correct encumbrance. The capital improvement fund is currently focusing on receiving invoices for closing out work. One of them happens to be the locker room HVAC project. It currently had a successful water balancing test, so we're just awaiting the final invoice to close that out. So I'm anticipating by next board meeting, we'll have good news from even that department. The retention pond is still awaiting the survey of existing conditions. The delay. there was we had to clean out the area of trees and growth and shrubbery so that they could get in there. The capital non-in, non-recurring, we are still awaiting the closure of the DOT project. Andy Tierney, the town manager for Hebron, has reached out to Kathy Osten for assistance in getting the clothes out there. So hopefully next month, that's better news for you. Are there any questions that I can answer at this point?
The net favorable would be, let's say, typical fifty-five.
So we're getting better at identifying that. So this year we did think a little bit different. We did our best to import all faculty that are now certified salaries to teachers and anything that was available at the time of the new year, giving up to unallocated personnel. So that's where most of your available funds are. So if you look at page two of the packet, you will see the, at the bottom, you'll have expenditure budget status. In the far right column, you'll see $195,339, $339. And that would be your salary. So that represents available staff. And if you go down from there, you have the benefits that what's available, purchase services, what's available, property, which would be equipment, software, those kinds of items. And then other would be your 800 category would be your dues and fees and or leasing would be involved in that. This again is a moving target because as we know, some things might be less, some things may be more. We might have people coming and going that we didn't know about. So that's how my projection is, it's a moving target.
We might have dry wells.
Right. Yes, the dry well.
We'll get to that. We'll get to that.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So moving on to 12.3B, which is the food service monthly report. So we have good news and bad news here too. So based on the smart funds that, that we've received, which was $138,224.33, that's the money that the state of Connecticut has allocated to us to be able to provide meals for free for the students. Based on the utilization in the month of September, we utilized $43,921 of that. So we're anticipating that we can, and again, we can't do a partial month of claiming, we can only do a full month. So we go through December as a full month of claiming and any monies that are left, we can put towards equipment. That information that I just stated is brand banking new and was not clearly communicated when the grant first came out. So luckily Kate was able to go to a conference on Friday where the state was presenting that information and was able to get that firsthand. And she's like, wait, hold the press. So that's a good thing. So at least now we can clearly communicate to families, we'll meet our 30-day notice of being able to communicate to families that December 31st free meal, then January 1st, we'll start charging for meals.
Which in retrospect, we were, we were originally targeting November, right? So it's a kind of a good story all the way around. Okay, good.
So again, back in April, we received a grant from the state of Connecticut to help address supply chain and getting additional funding to help offset the cost of that. The state of Connecticut has graciously given us a second dose of that money, which was unanticipated. So we are receiving $24,800, oh wait, hold on, I got that backwards. So we just needed to receive, yeah. So $26,215.95 is, is the second bout of money. Originally we got $24,899. So we're looking good for any additional cost increases for food. As you can see on page two of this, that currently we're running at a deficit for the fiscal year. We're still making up for the food costs and other items that we received in August. Are there any questions on the report as I presented?
Nope.
So 12.3, yes.
Is there, is there any thought because of prices and inflation and everything of any additional dollars to go towards meals after the new year?
So everybody keeps pushing for that. So obvious for groups such as the Connecticut Business Officials, we have a national group as well, as well, school business officials, the National Group for Superintendents, there's national, everybody's been petitioning the USDA and the state government to try to do universal free forever. But there doesn't seem to be any momentum to move it forward on the political side of it.
Yeah, I, I heard that at one point. And I, I think, I, I mean, I just say, it's not that I want to be ever wasting money. And I don't, I don't think it is. I just think that kids and everybody has gone through so much and there's so many things we're still seeing that, that it would be nice if we could guarantee food. And I know to a degree we do if we find out. I do understand that. But I, I have a feeling we're still missing some families. But if you can, maybe if you and Colin can keep us up any of that because that comes across your desks more than ours, that would, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So 12.3C is the high school and middle school student activity accounts. As of September 30th, the report balances with the account balances at the bank.
Always a good thing.
Always a good thing. Are there any questions related to student activity?
Just a quick one. Where does this money come from? Do they, do the clubs raise it themselves?
Correct. So classes, classroom, like sports item that, like teams will raise money for search items like that, if there's field trips that they want to go on. All right. So 12.3D is the short-term investment fund account. So as promised, this will be reported on, on a monthly basis. So you will see on the flip side of the memo that there was a balance of $33,439. That was our beginning balance. We invested $300,000 and we had reinvestment of $141.43 in our less than a full month, because I think I did it on the 27th, if I'm not mistaken. So we did pretty good on our return for investments. So, and this will be coming to the board on a monthly basis now. So are there any questions on this debt account?
Nope. Glad we did that. Thank you for following up on that.
Nope. Okay. So 12.3E, now this one's going to be a little bit cumbersome. So try to stay, ask any questions. So stay in tune with me here. Okay. So as, as the board is well versed in, we had an irrigation well that dried up. We attempted to hydrobrack the well to try to get the veins or to get new veins to open up. Unfortunately, that process was not as successful as we would like or hoped it would be. In that process, our pump also burned its motor out because it was trying to draw water when there was no water and the alarms did not work. So we were unaware of that situation. So during this process, the vendor that we were working with had suggested that we now have to relocate the well and drill a new well. The new well is going to cost close to $95,000. So if you look at page two of the memo. So on August 18th, we spent or had a PO put in for $8,200 for the hydrobracking. On September 9th, another PO was put in to replace the well pump for $5,753 for total $13,953 that currently has hit the operating expenditure accounts. The proposed well is going to be $94,463. This money needs to come from the capital non-recurring athletic field replacement because unfortunately, that's really about the only place we have a big chunk of change like that outside of the CIP unallocated funds. So in totality, I'm looking for $108,416 for the total well project. So the proposed transfer is I'm trying to take $75,431 from CIP and the remainder from the capital non-recurring repair of athletic fields of $32,985. So what I'm trying to do is take the expenditures from the operating account and put them into the capital accounts so that they're all considered part of the project and make operating coal so that Mr. Schleyhopper can buy seed and do whatever else he needs to do for the fields. That's normal maintenance. And hopefully we'll have water to water that. So on the front memo are two proposed, one, two, three. There's three, three proposed motions for the word to, I'm taking to consider.
So, so I think the, whether we push through with, I mean, there's really, it's either all or none because we're, we're, it's all one project. We're just pulling from different sources to pay for it. So I think, you know, I don't want to steal any of the committee report funding, uh, thunder, but I think it's relevant to ask Mike to, and the, the facilities committee to just kind of give us, you know, any feedback or any thoughts on, on the project that we need to, you know, discuss.
And we discussed it in finance too, so we could talk.
Right, and finance as well, yeah. So.
All right. So let me give you some background on the discussion at the October 4th facility subcommittee. We've been talking a great deal about doing repairs to the athletic fields. We can't do any repairs to the athletic fields unless we have a well to water those fields. So the well repairs are absolutely necessary for us to continue using the fields that we have, even if they stay in their current condition. So we reviewed the details about where we are leading up to this point. The well started, output started to fall off, as Eva mentioned. We took appropriate measures to try to recover that well. It was unsuccessful. So really, the only remaining action is to go ahead and, and relocate the well. And the facility subcommittee discussed this at length. We unanimously agreed with the direction that was proposed, which was to go ahead and expend, spend the dollars to go ahead and repair the well. Because that is contingent on our successful decision to pursue any field repairs in the future.
So Mike, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
So I'll, I'll make the first motion to approve a transfer of $75,431.39 from the capital improvement unallocated to the new.
She got out. We lost you. You lost your, your, your sound.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we, we lost your sound about halfway through your motion.
Okay, I'll do it again. Wow. To approve a transfer of $75,431.39 from the capital improvement unallocated to the new project irrigation well replacement.
I will second that.
Okay.
We did talk about it at finance.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Go ahead.
The, I don't know if wills are still done the same way, but in estimate for a well in the past, it's been very much an estimate because not knowing how deep they have to go and so on. So I'm assuming that this is the case here and that the transfers that we're doing would be, you know, hopefully a not to exceed type number.
I can tell you that the, the target that's well depth that's included for the quote that we've been provided is 600 feet. So it's fairly significant, right? Increases the odds of success. But the caveat does exist that if we are unsuccessful down to that depth, there would be potential for additional costs to proceed further.
And if, if we got good water at 250, would it be cheaper?
Yes, it would actually. Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ask for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. If you want to drive on, Sue, that would be awesome.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the transfer of $32,985,000 from athletic fields repair to irrigation well replacement.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I know, I know I heard Kerry. I heard Kerry's voice.
That was me.
Kerry's got.
All right, Kerry's the second.
Yes.
Any subsequent discussion? Hearing none, last for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously. And then if you wouldn't mind, Sue, driving on with the third one, that would be great.
Sure. To approve the expenditure reclassification from operating fund to capital non-reoccurring irrigation well, non-reoccurring irrigation well replacement in the amount of $13,593 for POs 240418 and 230541.
Great. Any seconds?
That's your motion. I'll second.
Who's the first one?
Sue.
Yes, Sue, and then.
All right. And Dr. Benson Clark is the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstentions? No absten, no abstentions. Oh, that will also pass unanimously. All right.
Okay. So 12.3F is our regularly scheduled budget appropriation transfers, which require board action. So per policy, the 24 transfers that I'm presenting to you represent transfers that were done through the course of business through July 1st through September 30th. And all, each transaction is included in the packet in case you wanted to look at anyone closer. But the summary sheet basically totals out, the total for the 24 transfers was $674,216.14. And to anticipate Mr. Shifshank's questions, the August personnel transfers to unallocated. So that's what we're putting money up into the unallocated account, account for a lot of that.
Yes.
All righty then. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the transfers as presented totaling
So moved.
Mike, Mike moved it. And Eric, are you second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Since all the anticipated questions have been covered.
Hearing none, I'll put it to a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. Item 12.4, Health and Medical Insurance Consortium Agreement and Bylaws.
So the Health and Medical Insurance Consortium was established in 2017 with the purpose of pooling insurance enrollees from the municipalities and boards of education from the three towns. AHM is included in that, within this organization as well. The, the idea and the goal of pooling is to achieve cost savings. And there were, there are some recommended changes to the bylaws that are provided in your meeting packet. The changes are being to ensure, the changes are being made to ensure that there is clarity in how reserves are managed. The changes need to be approved by the Board of Ed. They also need to be approved by all the other municipalities and the other boards of education as well, and the AHM Board of Directors. And then once they are approved by all of the organizations involved, I would also need to be able to sign the new bylaws on behalf of the district. If anybody has questions about the changes that are being recommended, certainly Eva and I could be our best to respond to this question.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the changes to the Region 8 Health and Medical Insurance Consortium bylaws and authorize the superintendent to sign the updated consortium bylaws?
Still moved.
Eric moved it. Sue, you're the second.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Hearing none, that carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. 12.5. So as part of our recent superintendent search, we incorporated a discussion that sort of addressed what is, what, what looks like a future challenge for Region 8 in that we will see a declining, likely see a declining enrollment in student, students up to, I want to say, what was the year? What, when's the year? When do we?
About five years out, or expected, start rebound.
Five or six years out. So as part of that discussion, you know, we, we got some presentations on that. There was some. There was some interesting, you know, um, thoughts that were, you know, raised as possible solutions, potential ways to mitigate, you know, some of the financial impacts for the school. Make sure that we can, you know, maybe overcome that five year or six year, whatever the, the span is, in the least detrimental way for the resources that we have currently and carry them over so that we can address that new population when it starts to get bigger, things like that. Superintendent McComara, while we were discussing developing the agenda, had, um, raised the discussion about, um, whether or not, you know, what would the board feel about possible partnerships with other K through six or potentially K through eight districts, uh, as schools of choice? And how that would work with, you know, with RAM and could that potentially offset some of the, the, uh, concerns we have about that population gap? And honestly, I have no idea how the, how the board would, would feel about that, and I don't even know how I feel about it. So I thought what, you know, what, what we thought was to just open that discussion up here, have a, you know, sort of a, an open dialogue about it. Probably most likely develop some information requirements or, and questions and concerns. You know, just maybe put some things on the table so that we can start to maybe address this. Or maybe it's an outright something the board doesn't even want to discuss and, uh, completely open to that. I don't think I'm aware of the pros and cons enough to say that. So I did ask, um, Colin to, uh, come prepared to give us at least, uh, to kick off that conversation with some of that information. And then I think it just goes from there, wherever, whatever direction the board takes it as far as interest or non-interest.
Yeah, so thank you, and, and just to provide further context, I want to make sure the board members do understand, I'm, I'm not, I am not, nor I have gone and made phone calls to K to eight or K to six districts saying, hey, do you want to send your, your students to RAM? The, the reason that, um, I brought this up and wanted to have this on the agenda is because of the fact that I happen to be having a conversation with a superintendent of a low, a relatively local K to eight district that currently, uh, sends schools to other, sends their students to other, other high schools in the area. And, and we were talking about something completely unrelated and this person said to me, hey, you know, we ought to talk about the idea of having our students in my school when they matriculate out to, to be able to come to RAM. And my response to this person was, if, if my board gives me the direction to, uh, open that dialogue, I'm, I'm happy to engage in that dialogue. But I wouldn't have felt comfortable speaking as a representative of the district with another superintendent without getting that specific direction from the Board of Education. So that, that's really what, what I wanted, you know, this is something that, um, has been, I know I, I would not be the first person to, uh, engage in conversations with other districts about this, other K to eight or K to six districts. This has been something that I know has come up in the past, I believe even as far as three superintendents ago and maybe, maybe even prior to that. And so, you know, I, I just know that it obviously has not come to fruition. And I, I'm happy to engage in, in at least some communication with other area superintendents to gauge their interest and just to talk about it. But again, I, I'd want to find out if that's even something that the board is interested in me doing. So, um, you know, there, you know, there's, uh, it, it would, we, I don't envision being a situation where we would go, and I use the term go after, and maybe that sounds kind of ominous, so, but I wouldn't see us going after a town to say, hey, we are, we are the receiving school, right? Like, right now, obviously, we are the receiving school for Hebron, Andover and Marlboro, right? I, I think if we did anything, it would be we are a school of choice for, for districts. And there are other schooled, schools in the area that are schools of choice, other K to twelve districts that are schools of choice for, for, for districts that don't have, um, don't have their own high schools. You know, there'd be a, a host of things that we would need to discuss, uh, transportation would be one. We'd have to talk about what the cost per, the, the per pupil cost would be. There's, there's a litany of things that, uh, we'd have to discuss. But again, I think that the kickoff would be, is this something that people are even interested in, so.
Open it up to the board for discussion. Go ahead, Sue.
I would entertain hearing more about it, so I would be open for you having further discussions.
Who's that, Eric? Go ahead, Kerry.
I agree with Sue, I just, I would like to know a little bit more. I don't know if there's documentation out there that could be provided, but I would certainly be very interested in hearing about it.
Is there anybody that's, is there anybody that's adamantly opposed to, to at least entertaining the discussion? I'm sorry, Joe Coletti's recognized.
Thing that makes me nervous is when our numbers bounce back. Would it be difficult to go to that school district and say, we're not going to accept your kids anymore?
Yeah.
And then, because if our numbers grow too large and then we have to still accept their kids, do we have to build additional facilities and then that gets to the millions and that's a mess?
Yeah, I'll come back, I'll, I'll unpack, I'll come back in a second, Dr. Benson Clark, one thing I just could piggyback on that. I think, I'm not adamantly against the, the future discussion, but I think in my mind, there's some pretty key terms that would have to be involved in any kind of discussion, so I think that's, so I'd be interested to hear more about the terms. I think the other term that kind of hit me as I was thinking about this, once I got the packet was, um, the idea that, and this, I hate to say this, but, you know, one of the things that impacts our budgets, uh, very, very, um, strongly is, um, special education. And so, um, I, I know if we have students that, if we have, if, if we have terms with other towns to, to give their kids options to come here, I think we have to be very specific about what are the cost impacts to, to RAM. And again, it's, it's, I feel terrible saying that, but at the end of the day, we have a fiduciary responsibility to Hebron, Andover and Marlboro to manage our budget. And so any, any circumstance where we would be absorbing students from another town, we would have to be very careful about defining how that cost is developed, uh, if there are additional or special considerations. So I know there's a couple of people on the board, Dr. Benson Clark, why don't you go ahead first?
No, so, um, absolutely, I, I mean, I did this work for about twenty years of my career with, um, different high schools and their agreements. And Joe, to what you said, um, there are built-in provisions. For instance, at one point, one of the schools I was at, we had, um, Lyman, not just as Voag, but as a school. But then they had kind of the building boom and, you know, and everybody explored it early and had conversations. It was, it was very friendly, but there's, there's a lot to it. And there were different ways that I've seen it done with special ed and what I think ended up being the wisest way was, um, kind of honoring the intent of special ed is doing it by service. So there wasn't just, at one of the high schools, there was this special ed cost at the Norwich Free Academy, for instance. Their Aces for kids with, um, emotional challenges was more expensive than a learning disabled kid, but a kid with multiple disabilities was more. But as we all went on through time and, and did this work, the most fair thing I think that felt was, um, you know, honoring every child and, and just figuring out those costs. Mike, I almost think that this should go to an ad hoc study committee. Because as Joe said, and as you said, there are some complicated things. And Colin will certainly get, um, a lot of information. But I, I think there's, I guess what I'm saying, why I think in the ad hoc, ad hoc committee, I, I think this, I think this is a fair amount of information to, as you both said, make sure we're legal and that we don't, at some point, God forbid, get said that we didn't, we didn't take a special ed student for some reason or something. So we would really need to know what we were doing and, you know, and have that all proper. Is that something Colin that you and, um, Mike have thought of in ad hoc committee for that?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a, a next step if, because again, I've been approached by one, uh, school district, right? But I will say that there are other school districts as well that might be in a similar situation if I was to approach them, which I have not done at this point. And so I think that the first step would be finding out like what districts even would have the interest, right? And then I think if that was the converse, then what we would do is, you know, I would do my research in talking with, uh, superintendents from other school districts that are currently doing this and serving as a receiving school of choice. You know, having Eva talk with business managers in those school districts and gathering that type of information. And I think you're absolutely right, Dr. Benson Clark, of putting together a committee. We could bring it to this, to the committee and then have some conversation, have some questions raised, go back. And then, and then just as we would do is have committee report out, uh, the, the subcommittee report out.
Get legal, deeply involved in the terms, the terms of whatever.
No doubt about it, no doubt about it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree at all. I'm not sure I'm ready to say that we should develop a committee tonight, but I think given, you know, given some, given, you know, understanding what the, the scope of the potential, um, solution might be, and then at that point, you know, coming back and then putting it to a committee, I think that's a great idea.
So we're not thinking twenty three, twenty four, then we're thinking twenty four, twenty five?
I, I, I wouldn't begin to say one way or the other at this point. I, I, I think it would largely depend on, you know, what the interest was and, you know, i- if there's a, a potential partner that said, hey, I'd really like to make this happen, then, then we would see what we could do. But I think that we would be, that we'd be in the driver's seat with this, right? And I think we do it on our timeframe that we're comfortable with if it was to even come to fruition.
Yeah, yeah, because my thought is that would be very quick to do that. And as, um, I, I heard, I think from Joe, we don't want to, we have great programs. Look how well spoken those two gentlemen were today. We want to make sure our programs maintain their quality and integrity. And I think we can expand and do that, but I, I do think that that takes some time and planning. So, you know, if we're not, if we're not naming committees by next, by next month, I would think it would have to go the year after. But, but that's okay, I mean, we don't even know if we want to do it.
I, I think what I was really hoping to gain from the board tonight was just, um, uh, kind of consensus that we'd be willing to entertain further discussion about it and give Colin some, um, not authority, but give, give Colin, uh, um, the opportunity to engage, you know, any potential other school systems and at least just start to develop some information so that we can look at it. Is, is there anybody opposed to that?
I, no, not at all, I have a question for, um, Colin and Eva. Through time, Colin and Eva, there have been incentives for schools to do some of, some of this work. And I know we just had a short session, so I don't recall there being any, um, recommendations or money attached to do this kind of work right now, is that, is that accurate?
That's an accurate statement.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Two things, first, just for clarity, RAM would remain a seven to twelve school, is that correct?
Yeah, I think what the discussion was, uh, I think what I, what I was, what, what we were getting at is that, uh, it's potentially students that would go, that are K through six and other school systems currently having the opportunity when they finish six to be able to come to middle, to middle school, is that?
Well, I, I do know that there could be other K eight districts that their students might finish through their eighth grade career in their current district who might be interested.
And then might want to come to high school.
Matriculated expression.
But we're not talking about changing the middle school to sixteen.
No, no, I'm not anyway, I don't think anybody else.
The other thing, um, I don't believe we want to get out in front.
No, I think that's a great point, yeah, absolutely.
Say that again, Eric?
We don't want to get out in front of the community.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we should be with the community if this is to be considered.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, if we were to say, well, we've been looking into this and, you know, we want to spring this on the community that we want to try doing something, I, I think, um, that would not be a good approach. So if there is going to be even a little chit chat, because chit, you know, the chit chat can turn into rumors and.
Absolutely.
It's in the paper, um, that we would have to, you know, get, get the pulse of our communities. Because there could, uh, there could be reasonable objections.
Completely agree.
You know, to people getting involved. So I think that would be a, a, a step in advance of, in my view.
Yeah, we.
Let me finish.
Yeah.
That would be a step in advance of, uh, engaging other school districts.
I agree, I agree. So I guess the question, I, I don't disagree with that, but does anybody disagree with that? So I guess the only other question I would say is, what's, what's the most appropriate method for that engagement? Is it a Colin, uh, and the town board, um, the town managers' initial discussion? Is it a, is it a, um, uh, representation from the board talking to the different town boards to?
I think, Mike, I think here's the start, that, that's why I, I said that before because I agree completely with what Eric said is a, um, you know, not a permanent, um, committee, but, but to have this ad hoc committee and to be kind of strategic and respectful and to be asking those questions. But there's something else I know for, for an absolute fact that seventh and eighth grade, um, at RAM is well beyond, um, you know, one of the gentlemen who, who I know approached our superintendent, the superintendent of the pre-K through eight school, the science programs, well beyond. So like, I just, I think we don't even know what, what we don't know, so we would not. So I, I almost think even before we talk to the townspeople, we have those conversations, like what's, what's the, what's the positive? What's the bad? And we know that Andover had a big pushback on this issue, right? And then we know that, um, Hebron has tried to talk to Marlboro and Marlboro wasn't interested. So I think that's why I said the ad hoc, kind of going slow and really trying to listen, but really actually understand what people's objections or, or thoughts or concerns were. Because it, it gets very heated.
Well, so I think, if, I, I don't disagree, I think the thing what I would ask, it may be to frame sort of this discussion here tonight and maybe try to, to, to try to find a, a horizon for this discussion that makes sense so that we can pick it back up at the next meeting. I think what I would probably say is that I think the very first, um, public, you know, discussion is happening right now, right? So this is a public meeting, we put it on the public agenda. It's certainly not the, it's certainly not something that we're, you know, having a conversation about without considering people like the communities and, and other board members and the administrators. So I think that's a good first step. The second step I do think is, and to Eric's point, to just get the pulse, because if we get the pulse of Andover and Marlboro and they're both so completely not interested in this, I feel like we'd be wasting a significant amount of our administrative time, uh, developing it.
And Hebron, right?
Mike, how are you going?
Absolutely, just using them as an example.
Mike, how are we going to get the pulse of the community if we don't have some basic questions answered? So in my mind, there's a few things, one of which, jumping on Joe's point. How are these other towns, are they responsible for tax paying if we ended up having to revamp or add room to the school? Secondly, he, uh, RAM has an extremely competitive athletic program. How is that going to impact families in terms of athletics? Also, how are these other towns? I know very little about this school choice, but how are these other towns represented on a, on our board? You know, I, I guess I just feel like in bef, we need to have some basic questions answered so that people actually know what they're saying yes or no to.
Well, I don't disagree, but I guess what my point was, is that I think coming out of this, this discussion, giving Colin the opportunity to have some of the initial pros and cons discussions, address some of the kind of, uh, uh, low hanging fruit questions, like you talked about, like we discussed about terms as far as costs for special ed versus, you know, students that don't need special ed care, things of that nature. If we, I think if we, I would propose that if we gave Colin the opportunity to put some of that, uh, information together in concert with, with, um, with Eva, and then, uh, not only share that information with the board, but also, uh, figure, I think, determine the best way for us to go have a, at least a socialization discussion with the three towns. And if it's, if it's the most appropriate method is for Colin and myself to go meet at the board meetings and, and do a short presentation and ask the question, is anybody adamantly opposed to this? Or is this something that we'd entertain and we should do some further development on it? Yeah, I, I think that's, that, that's where I would suggest we go with it. Because I don't, I, I think until we do those two things, develop a little bit more information so that we can in fact present something that maybe isn't the final solution, but answers a lot of the big, low hanging fruit, major, major questions, and then get the pulse of the, of the towns, that until we accomplish those two things, I don't know that there's much more. That until we accomplish those two things, I don't know that there's much more for us to make a decision on or to move forward on.
Could I add one more thing? And maybe I'm off base on this, but I do think it would be helpful for me to have conversations with other superintendents to even find out if there's interest from others. Like, and a conversation, because, because I don't want to, I don't want to sound, well, I just don't want to sound like I'm being, like, not willing to do work. I certainly am. But I also don't want to have ad hoc committee meetings and do all the things that you're proposing, where it's literally a single, a single district that says, hey, you know, we have, we have 25 kids leave eighth grade.
Right.
And we say, well, the, the return doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
It's immaterial for us.
So, so to me, just, just because I could go to other school districts and they could say, no, we're not interested. We're happy with our schools of choice.
So, so let me, let me propose this then. Given that, I think that's, I think that's right. If, if that's the case, to, to, to kind of serve two different purposes, maybe the first thing we should do is give Colin the authority to engage the town managers, to update the boards, town boards, that, hey, this is something that we're developing some information to eventually bring to you and get your feedback and get your, gauge your interest or non-interest on. At the same time, we give Colin the opportunity over, how long is it going to take you to do that?
Sue.
A month or so? A month to go and develop some of that information, identify if there's any interest, and then come back to us.
Can I ask you a question that I'm really confused about?
One second, please. So come back to us and then sort of say, here's the interest. Here's some of the bigger picture answers to the questions that you're asking. Certainly, if any point during the, over the course of the next 30 days, other stuff comes to mind, because I'm fairly sure I'll be thinking about something. It'll, it'll hit me at about two o'clock in the morning. Hey, this is something we need to talk about too. And then we, then, then the next meeting, we could probably have a little better understanding of what we're really talking about.
So my, my, my question, I'm confused as to which boards you, you are talking about. It seems to me that it's not the boards of ed for the K six schools, but it's the boards.
The town boards.
Yeah, the boards of finance. Okay, okay. You said something and I was, I was unclear. The boards, and, you know, and the boards of finance, boards of selectmen. You know, even having that conversation to make sure that everybody is in agreement. We right now have something kind of silly in our town in Marlboro that's creating a big political, tons of Facebook comments and everything about which board or who or why. And that, that's why I'm, I'm, you know, asking that. So to kind of make sure we have the proper process that we are asking, who we're supposed to be asking, that we're not slighting anyone, that we're, we're doing things appropriately.
So, so let me ask, so I'll just ask this question. Is, is there any opposition to giving Colin the authority to go ahead and engage the town managers? Just to say, you know, based on the last meeting, we publicly, you know, publish, publish that we would discuss this partnerships with other school districts. And we're, you know, developing some information to not only look at ourselves, but also to present to you at a point when it makes sense, when we have enough information. And then also give Colin the opportunity or the authority to kind of reach out and gauge that interest and gather that information for us. Is anybody opposed to those two things happening between now and the next month?
I think that would be great. Can he ask the town managers for advice too on next steps? Because I just know that there have been a lot of hurt feelings when, you know, people wanted to absorb Marlboro and we all got feisty and we want our local public school, we felt strongly. So I just want us to be really, what's the word, like respectful of, of, I just, I don't know if I know the order. So if Colin could find that with the town manager, that would be more than fine. So as long as we're including everybody, we're including everybody early.
What, what I can do is I can create an, I can create a mechanism for, for even board members, like in response to what you said, Mike, about questions are going to come to your mind. You know, create, create an ability for board members to, to ask questions, right? What about this? What about this? What about this? I could, I could also create, if I speak to town managers or if there's only a first selectman in the town, speak to the first selectman and, and provide them with the same opportunity, right? So that they could generate questions that, that may be pertinent, that we would want to look into, to be able to have answers for. And that would help me over the next month to come up with, well, here's the information that I need to put together to, to share back out with you and potentially share back out with them. At the same time, I could just at least engage in some very low level informal conversations. Do you have the interest?
I love that.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, please. Just so, and I think to be clear, the conversation is, no, there's no decisions being made. Nobody's, we're just entertaining a possibility. I'm sorry, Sue, you had, you're next in line.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be sure that if one town manager says no, that we don't stop with the finding out more information. So.
I don't think it's necessarily we're asking anybody to say yes or no at this point. I think we're, we're just asking what's, what's the pulse of the, the board? Or, I mean, you know, and frankly, once this is a public, this is a public forum, at some point, I'm sure this will be discussed, you know, at a larger group than just the boards. So we'll, I'm sure, hopefully we'll get some public comment about it, too.
Right. We could possibly mention it to the town managers or first selectmen, gather more data and then let, let the town managers know that this is the meeting where more information is going to be provided. They can attend, join remotely to hear more information. But I wouldn't want one person deciding the fate of something like that.
No, I agree. I agree.
Sue's point, though, everybody who's not paying attention to Marlboro politics is, is brilliant. I mean, we're going to have a civil war here in town soon if we're not careful. There's a lot going on with that thing. That was a good, a good point.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think anybody's at a point where they're ready to kill, kill something off or make a decision. This is, we're really just in the information gathering.
I kind of love Colin's idea, though, that as long as people identified themselves, that different constituents could weigh in so that they, they wouldn't feel quieted. And maybe there would be, maybe there would be like other or something I haven't thought of, because there, there might be thoughts or something that we just don't know or we have not considered.
I think a lot of that will come out of the Colin's discussions with superintendents that already have systems in place where they do this. Kirsten, you were.
That's where I was going. I think it goes without saying, we're not the first district to ever entertain this idea across the state.
Right.
Colin probably has connections and so she, all those things, we don't know, we don't know. All those questions that we haven't even considered yet, somebody else has. Find out.
So, so just to be clear, and I just make sure, again, I don't think we need a motion on this. I think what we really just need is consensus that it's okay for Colin to, to socialize the potential for a, something down the road with this, with the, with the town boards or the representatives, whoever's the most appropriate.
Or superintendents.
Yeah. Or superintendents, right? Exactly. And then also with, to engage with other school districts and identify interests and identify best practices and terms and things of that nature so that we have a little better understanding of what we might potentially be holding a vote on down the road if, if it ever got to that point. Everybody, is there anybody opposed to those, to those next steps?
No, just with, not long ago, as you said, we, about three superintendents ago, so maybe it's long ago. But that with declining enrollment, people were kind of competing, you know, for, for different kids and things. So it'll be fascinating what you find out. And I think the way that you're doing it sounds very wise to me, because we don't know what we don't know right now after COVID.
I feel good about our chances in competing.
Who said that?
Mike.
Mike, which Mike?
Mike Morris. I feel good about our, if we got into a competition with, with other school districts, I feel pretty good about our, our chances with that.
Trying to learn everybody's voices. Okay.
All right. So that giving the case, is there any, any other input on 12.5? Great. Let's try and move on to the committee reports. We're pushing up against, we're a little past time, but we're, we're doing all right. So with that being the case, why don't we go ahead and talk facilities first, please?
Okay, I'll be brief. Since we've talked about much of what we discussed on the October 4th meeting, there were three primary topics. One is the repair of the fields and the proposal coming in from Tom Irwin advisors. I'll talk briefly about that. The other was the well. I don't think I need to expand on any discussion there. I already concluded that the facility subcommittee endorsed the spending of budget to fund the, the well repair. And then the last was HVAC grant, which we discussed in good enough detail during tonight's proceeding. As far as the field repairs, the, the proposal has been received, which came in the form of a solutions report with details to back it up. The total for all three fields plus the, the track came out to about $1.1 million in total. Little bit more than I think we anticipated. So we started drilling a little bit deeper into some of the, the individual fields. And some of what we discovered was the 316 field is actually broken into two sections. Only the south section was under, was considered under part of their proposal. So we did ask Tom Irwin to go back and provide us with a number to provide a solution for the 316 field in its entirety. There will be a cost associated with the assessment that will need to be done to the balance of the field that was not already considered as part of their turf testing that they do. The other thing that we looked at and speaking with Dan Trudeau was some options on the comp field, right? The comp field appears to be in fairly good condition at this point in time. And so we asked Tom Irwin to come back with a proposal to perhaps do some enhancements to the field as opposed to a complete tear up and replacement. And so part of that includes some things like a sand master and a, I'm not a lawn technician, so I don't know the details. But there are some procedures that they can, they can execute to actually bring the field back to life and continue to operate the field in its current state. One of the things that they did comment on was a perimeter drain would be necessary to get the fields, the drainage in a, in a condition where we would be able to maintain that field in its current condition. So they owe us a couple of pieces of input that will go back into the proposal or that will be added to the proposal. And I, what I would like to do is have the facility subcommittee reconvene to go through that information before we put together a recommendation in front of the board. Any questions from anybody?
No. Any questions? Thank you. Policy?
Kind of did that, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Negotiations? I don't think you guys did that yet.
We have a meeting coming up on the 26th to talk as a subcommittee, and we are slated to commence with negotiations, I believe, the week after.
Right, okay. Program?
We did not meet this month.
Okay. And finance? Dr. Vincent Clark, finance?
Sorry, I was talking, but muted. We met on finance and we went through the particulars for the well and all understood what and why we're doing that. So thank you to the facilities committee for that. And then we also spoke about just legal fees and not, and, you know, and I wanted to bring the topic. I was not saying that legal fees are too expensive. I just am a continuous improvement person and I like to examine data and to be looking and thinking when we are using attorneys. And, and, you know, the committee, I thought, was very sophisticated in Eric and Mary and Colin and Eva. And said, you know, sometimes it makes sense to, you save money by making a call to the attorney. At other times, you can, you know, tap into colleagues. And yes, that takes your time and time is money, but then that also builds capacity. So, so I think it's just thinking about using attorneys before we use them. Eric had a very good point, which is attorneys, for the most part, run conservatively, which is appropriate to keep boards out of trouble. And that if we do ask them about something, then sometimes, not that we're bound to do what they suggested, but somewhat, and that that may be a longer course or, and I also brought up the point in certain situations, and I've seen none at Ram, to be clear. But I've seen when attorneys have been brought in in special education cases, and there's a time and a place, but I've seen where sometimes it's, it's, it's made the, the relationship not as, not as strong between the district and the family. So I think we just all came to agreement that, yes, there are times to use attorneys. And it depends on everything. It depends how much Colin has on his plate, how much background and expertise he has. You know, if it's something that needs to be known right away and he has 50 things due, a call to the attorney probably makes sense. So I just wanted to share that, that no way is it a criticism. It's just all of us trying to understand where our dollars and cents are spent and to really understand this budget so that we can all go out this budget season and really be able to talk to it and its specifics and answer people's questions.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Similarly, could you, any updates or input for Cabe?
Well, Cabe has some workshops coming, coming up. I noticed that one that's very soon is not distanced because, and I, I might reach out to them to see if they would do hybrid, because sometimes at lunch, you could partially watch that and maybe be doing some work or something. I don't know. Is anybody attending the one? I think it's next week, maybe? That's coming up, but it's onsite. There's one coming up very soon that's onsite. Cabe's big thing, of course, is the November session. And a couple of our folks who were able to go, you know, life happens and are, are no longer able to go, but will still have a nice amount of people there. And, you know, what would be great is they put, they list the topics. If any of you want to look at the agenda, because you cannot go and you'd like me to attend a specific topic, I would be happy to do that to not only just gather the PowerPoint, but to hear the, the conversation and to take notes. So please feel free to do that for any of you who aren't able to go.
Okay. And then Eastcon?
Eastcon, as our superintendent said, will update us at the next meeting. I think that should be a nice warm welcome home for Eric meeting. Things are kind of chipping away there, so I think we'll be in better place and it even is going to be better that it ended up at that meeting versus this month. We have been having very regular meetings every other week on our finances, along with our regular board meetings. And then we have, we have a retreat this month as well. So we have a Saturday retreat coming up this month for Eastcon.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Of course.
Move on to item 14, public comment. Hebron, Andover and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there any, anyone present that would like to give a public comment? Hearing none. Is there anyone online that would like to give a public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to item 15. You have informational items presented. Colin, anything that you need to highlight for us? Nope. Okay. Hearing none, I would ask, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Gabe, Mike, the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Carrie, second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. A voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, any abstentions? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.